And discuss the TIF applications. What I'm gonna do now. If anyone doesn't have any questions, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim. And Tim, I'm gonna let you orchestrate what the actual discussion platform is gonna go at, whatever you're trying to present.
Sure, given that most of the guests that are here are here to talk about the TIF side of this meeting. Why don't we start there? And Brian, why don't you begin with updating, providing the update on the various tips that are coming forward?
Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Counselor Brown. I'm gonna share my screen here of a quick six slides here that will coincide with the projects. If I can, I don't know if Focus can allow me to. Focus Springfield, are you with us?
Hi, Brian. It's Susan. I'm trying to do the share screen, but it's not letting me.
Okay, yeah, all I'm getting is host disabled. Screen sharing.
Hold on.
You gotta do like, yeah, there's like three buttons on it that you gotta.
Is it working now?
Yes. I believe so. Let's see. You guys getting that?
Yeah.
Yes.
So again, thank you, Counselor Brown. So just a quick update on TIF applications. And again, we usually start with a quick briefing of TIF to begin with tax increment financing. TIFs are for commercial projects that create jobs and add significant real estate value. It is coupled with a state investment tax credit investment. And the only way to access that state investment tax credit credit for business is to get an approved TIF from a local property tax agreement. So the city has to approve first. And then they're then eligible for the state investment tax credit, which is often important to businesses investing. Also important to know is TIF plans do not impact current taxes collected. So exemption exemption schedules, tax savings are really only the tax growth created by the new project. So that's what the I is in TIF. It's the increment. It's the new growth. So taxes collected today on projects, properties that we talk about will continue to be collected. And we're only talking about the new growth created from the project. Advanced welding is a new application, and we're really just putting this in here to notify city council. One of the things we do when we get an application is let the city council know that there's a new application. This was just received in full last week. Advanced welding is on Brookdale Drive in East Springfield. They are seeking a five-year tax increment plan. Plans can be from five to 20 years. The city typically goes with a five-year plan unless there's extenuating circumstances. So it's the minimum plan that's available, and that's what Advance is seeking. They purchased a small company in Connecticut and they're relocating them to Springfield. They're building up 14,000 square feet of new space. And Advanced Welding is a welding company, as you can imagine by the name. And they're a vendor of companies like Raytheon, Lockheed Martin, and Sikorsky. The project moves 12 jobs to Springfield and potential for new jobs after establishment. It's a $1.5 million investment. And just one note we put on this one is that Advanced Welding actually did a TIF previously that expired in 2020. And so this is, this would be a new TIF for this new, new aspect of the project. Also of note, they work with the Putnam High School on the welding program. They serve as an advisor there. We don't have advanced welding here today because we're just starting the review on that application. This is really just information for council.
I'm sorry. I think it's fair to note that the committee is raising some policy concerns around more than one TIF and, you know, kind of discussing what the maximum amount of TIFs that any one business should get. And creating thresholds that would warrant consideration of more than one TIF to any particular business. So there, there's some concerns, you know, on a policy perspective about the potential of, you know, how many TIFs are we going to provide to one business?
The second project is represented here in the room. I think, I believe Greg was introduced earlier, President of Duck Pack. And I think Ron, Ron is here as well. Duck Pack is a company we've been working with for quite a while on their project. The council's been notified about their interest in the TIF. They are purchasing the building that you see in front of you at Page Boulevard. This building had been multi-tenanted over the years. This is a company that's moving here from East Long Meadow and bringing 43 jobs to Springfield. And some of those folks are already residents of Springfield, which will be moving them closer to home on a Mass Transit line right by 291. The investment is 1.5 million. They purchased the building for 3.7 million. And I guess I'll turn it over to Greg if you want to talk a little bit about who Duck Pack is, what you do, who your clients are, and a little bit about the project.
Brian, I don't mean to interrupt you. I do think on the last slide where it said 150 Brookdale Drive was purchased for 3.7 million. I think that's a redundancy here. I think that the 150 Brookdale Drive should, should have a different acquisition price in 13. It was more like 1,125,000.
Yeah, that's just purchase price on the advance.
Yeah, I think it's just copied.
Sharred over from this slide.
Yeah, so I just, just want to point that out, but I don't mean to interrupt. I just want to put out the facts.
Okay. So some of you have heard our story, but for those who haven't, so again, I'm Greg Merchant. I'm the president. I recently became a co-owner of Duck Pack. Duck Pack actually was founded in Springfield by the Sweat brothers, and that was in the 40s. And they were installers of ductwork in the City of Homes back then. And one of the brothers said, we are so good at this. I just want to make a production line style and start selling ductwork to other installers. And that's how the company was born, making prefab ductwork for residential forced air systems in a production line style. We're not a custom metal shop. We're making a set of ductwork with a lot of different fittings and parts that go into forced air systems. In 56, Russell Sweat built a brand-new factory, and this is his office that I'm sitting in today. And it's out here in East Long Meadow. So the company, you know, like ductwork, it's still a staple part of residential construction. And forced air systems today are still preferred because of everything you can do to improve indoor air quality. So we, we sell our product today through wholesale supply channels. Our largest customer is FW Web Company. They're another Massachusetts-based company. And if you've heard of any of our customers, you may have heard of FW Web. We have several others, others in Springfield, including the Bell Simons Companies, who also do a very good job selling our ductwork as well. At this time, we've just, we, we just came up on, I've been with the company. Let me back up. I, I came to the company 20 years ago and started work as a general manager. And in recent years, it just became obvious that for us to keep up with the growth of our distributors, we were going to need a new space. And we work on, we work on pretty thin margins. We have to be really efficient in order to make money. And we do year in, year out, but it's hard fought. So we need to expand. We need to move everything and keep it under one roof. And that's where we started looking for a building. This building on Page Boulevard is just the right size for us. It's gonna leave a little extra room for growth. And I think we're gonna grow into it pretty swiftly once we get set up there.
Have you guys had a chance to talk to any of the neighborhood councils or anybody over there?
Yeah.
Or the counselor himself?
Yep, I've talked with Kathy Brown. And I've connected with her. I got her some information. We've been in a recent newsletter. And last Tuesday, I was on their Zoom meeting where I introduced myself to the people at that meeting.
And then, um, how about the actual trucks and the delivery stuff? How's that? Is that gonna be?
Yeah, we were, so raw material in terms of receiving, we receive, this is really thin light gauge metal, and it comes in coils that don't exceed 10,000 pounds. So we'll get flatbed trucks that bring in steel coils. And those will come in two to four times a week, depending on the season. We're gonna receive those in at one end of the building. We're gonna do some modifications to the, to the building. And then we run to currently 48-foot trailers hit the road five days a week to deliver our product to the wholesalers. And then finally, there's a few miscellaneous deliveries for things like packaging corrugated and some other dampers and specialty parts for ductwork.
Because the main thing I know a lot of times it's just, as long as the neighborhood councils and people around are, aren't hindered by it, a lot of times it could, you know, you have to, it's always, always beneficial. When I, I'm always for businesses, you know, it's always can be beneficial. But I always say, you know, make sure that you're working with the actual community too, because it can be, it can be hard if you talk that's up. But I appreciate.
No doubt, no doubt. And Brian, you know, Brian tipped me off to that early on, and I will stay with that counsel. You know, so that we do that. We were, right now, we're just running a first shift. And with this space, I think we're gonna continue to run a first shift. So you're not gonna have tractors rolling down the road, hitting their Jake break at, you know, 2:00 in the morning. We're clean. We don't, we don't put off any chemicals or exhaust. So environmentally, it's a very clean operation. We're using electricity to cut, bend, roll, form. We don't even do a lot of welding here. There's no skilled welders. This is a variety of steps to like rivet and put together these parts. So I think, I don't think we're gonna be too noisy, and we're not gonna put off any pollutants. So I think.
If you could follow up with Kathy and see if you could get a letter of support to add to the package before it goes to the council.
Oh, sure. Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would definitely help. That was, that would help. And reach out to the ward counselor also. That would.
And Greg, 291 is a stone's throw from this building. I'm guessing the, the product's gonna be shipped and, and received from 291 right there, right?
Yeah, that was one of the things that really attracted me to this property. And first of all, the building was the right size, which is really important. Too much, and I can't afford it. Too small, it's not worth it. And then second was that proximity to the highways. Seven out of the 10 trucks that we run each week, five days a week, two trucks. Head from East Long Meadow here and have to go right up to the Mass Pike, right at that junction. So it's gonna save us a lot of time.
Yeah, will eliminate all the backroad driving that your trucks currently drive on.
Yeah.
So, um, yeah, and I, I mean, there's, there's businesses that are active in here and have truck deliveries currently. Those tenants will exit. And you know, and Greg didn't mention, but he's, you know, he's squeezed into a 55,000 square foot facility, I think, right, right now?
Yeah, that includes some storage containers and rented space down the street. So up that 55,000, yeah.
And, you know, and, and because of the struggles to find the right facility, Greg has really had to put the brakes on accepting new orders from customers. So by expanding into this facility, there's a backlog of, A, existing customers that want expansion to their facilities further away. And new customers that, you know, and the mid-Atlantic region that, you know, Greg feels strongly about bringing on, which will, you know, add to this existing 43. I think there's 44 people right now, Greg, you had mentioned.
Yeah, or right now.
I could easily see 10 to 15 jobs over the next three to five years, you know, the, the, once this space is, is opened up. Greg is getting a pipeline, a second pipeline to manufacture one of the most sold products. So the volume can get there. I think, you know, it's gonna be a great place. It's, it's not a high-skill labor. It's the kind of labor that, you know, Springfield can provide. Greg is great on the benefits. He understands, you know, what people need medical. They pay a significant portion of the medical. They have a profit sharing plan where the company contributes 3% a year to each of their, you know, each of the employees profit share or 401K profit sharing. And it's just, you know, I've been involved since December. And I have a lot of experience in helping companies grow. Greg reached out to, you know, contact. We have, yeah, that actually one of them is the legal companies. And I've worked with Bulby Richardson in Springfield for a number of years on transactions. Greg has also brought in a, a, a new controller who is an expert in manufacturing. He's brought in a new production manager. And, you know, as this thing grows, the next thing will be probably to bring in like an operating officer to help continue to bring this company to fill that 100,000 square foot. And, you know, provide this mid-Atlantic region through a great location and provide some great jobs in Springfield, good jobs that are, you know, line manufacturing jobs. And with good pay and good benefits.
Yeah, that's, that's it. And, you know, I'm, that's one of the things I'm most proud of is the jobs we provide. And, you know, we have a lot of people that, it's entry level. There's a lot of people that are new to our country from anywhere in the world. We've had a lot of the Vietnamese community, we, but, but people from all over. And it, it's, it's, again, it's a safe job. And as Ron said, I really try to do a good job being solid with the benefits. And, you know, that, that, that's something I feel good about when you see what that does for people that didn't, don't even know English. And then 10 years later, they have a child that graduated from high school and they're gonna go to college. So the, the other thing is we have that bus stop right out front, and I, I work with Summit Staffing, who helps me recruit. I also have a couple of other agencies. And they're like, that's just, we're gonna be able to recruit and find the people in Springfield. And they're just, it's gonna be easier with that bus line right there.
Now, what is the percentage as far as minorities in your company?
Yeah. It's, it's more than half. I can safely tell you that.
Yeah, it's a metric we don't follow. But yeah, it's a very diverse workforce.
No, I'm just curious. I'm just curious.
Yeah.
I mean, men, women, the women have some good detail hands, you know, I've been in other industries and they're good with the details, and there's some details in his jobs that, you know, that, that have to be attended to. So it's a, it takes a mix of people and skill sets.
Greg, Ron, can you speak to the, the schedule of when the, the big move would take place and, I guess, a scenario?
Well, Greg, Greg's more in tune with the timing. And he's been actually doing the legwork with, he was working with Associated Builders. And Greg, you can walk through that.
Yep, right. Associated Builders is our contractor. They're local. They use a lot of local subs. They've done a lot of work with Belize. And anyway, we've got some, we, the, the building is broken into three sections right now because there have been three tenants. One-third on the west end is vacant right now, and we've got some renovation work that's gonna be starting in the next 30 days. We're gonna start to bring in an overhead crane. We're gonna modify the docks and have a ramp built so steel, those flatbeds I mentioned can back right into the building under the overhead crane. So that work is gonna commence in the next 30 days. And then between now and next May, May 1st is my move date right now. Between now and then, we're gonna do renovations that are mostly on the inside of the building. We're just gonna be cleaning up the outside, maybe doing some paving for some parking, additional parking down the sides of the building. And so next May is, is the big move, and that's when we want to switch everything over.
I think, I don't know if there are no further questions, Counselor. I think we've got a few more projects to get through.
Yeah, go ahead. I, I have no.
So I thank you, Greg and Ron. So the next step really, Duck Pack is pretty far along. We've started to put together their agreement. I think the hope is to get them in front of city council in, in September for the full vote. So we will, we'll keep working towards that.
If you can make sure that you send the information to me and my colleagues also.
Sure.
It's always good just to make sure that they have it. I appreciate you being here and doing your due diligence. So just make sure. I mean, I'll send it to them, but if you can send it to me, and then it'll, it'll, it'll be great.
Okay.
All right.
I'm available for anyone. If anyone has questions, you want to come out and see our operation or see the new building, we're here. We're approachable.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Ron.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Switching gears a little bit, similar to TIFs are H-DIPS, which is the housing version for market rate housing, which we've done a few in the city over the, the last few years. Also, it is coupled with a state investment tax credit that's run through the HCD. That program is incredibly competitive now. In fact, they are now running competitive rounds, which they never did. And there is only $10 million worth of credit for the entire state. So we want Springfield projects to get in there. We want them to be competitive. There's a round that is just starting now. And so we have a couple of projects that has, have been out there in sort of application mode that we've been working with, that we're trying to move into approvals, hopefully, so they can get into that state application round. Same thing as TIFs, approving an H-DIP doesn't impact current taxes. It's really, the exemption schedule is impacting new growth created by the project. So the two projects are both, I think Roger Oberge, I saw him sign on. Roger has involvement in both, and this one is a Glenn Edwards property right on Main Street that is seeking a five-year H-DIP, converting the vacant upper floors into 18 market rate rental apartments, 11 one-bedroom, seven studio units, $3.7 million investment. And really would be a signal for sort of downtown housing right on Main Street to convert this property. And I know Glenn Edwards has some hopes to kind of continue that if he, if this sort of pilot project in this building, he can kind of go down the line in the building as there is some vacancies throughout the properties. He owns the entire block there from Bruce Landon Way on down. So Roger is Glenn's property manager, so he has involvement in this project. And Roger, I don't know if you're with us, or you can, I guess, speak to this project?
Yeah, I'm here. My click, my connection's a little spotty, so if I'm in and out, feel free to ask me to repeat myself or cover anything I missed. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, we can hear you good. So I don't know if you want to, I guess, speak to, I guess Glenn's current efforts on this project and where they see this going?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're really looking at a revitalization of this, this once, you know, great building here downtown. It's been vacant historically for a number of years. You know, to the point you mentioned, it seems like there's excess inventory in the commercial office space in the downtown CBD. So I think the economic support, a conversion to market rate housing. I think this would be the first of a couple of projects. Call it proof of concept. I mean, we already have some proof, you know, in the downtown Springfield area, but really on Main Street front and center. It's a complete overhaul, the building, all major systems, new facade work, windows, all major building systems that really provide a really high-quality upscale offering in the downtown. 18 units, like you said, and we're hoping to supply some additional amenities elsewhere on the portfolio. But, you know, because he does have control of that block. And, you know, his fitness centers, rec rooms, et cetera, other, other facilities. Very passionate about the development, very excited about the development. You know, preliminary financing approvals, pending a few things, one of them being tax increment agreement and looking for some, some grant subsidy monies to offset the cost of development. And, you know, looking forward to, you know, getting the ball rolling and moving this to completion.
Okay, and, and have you guys had a chance to talk to any of the neighborhood people around the council or anybody around?
I believe it's Adam Gomez, uh, who's in that area, and he's been a big supporter.
Okay. Because I'm, I'm personally, I, I personally love stuff like that. You know, that's something that I, I always strive for. I'd be curious if you can maybe, um, is there, is there something you can show of like what you actually hope to design over there? Is that something that you?
Oh, absolutely.
It's not necessary, but I would love to see.
Absolutely. We have full architectures for the floor plans as well as a rendering of the elevation post completion.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm sure some of the counselors, we'd love to see it. I mean, I just, you know, if you don't have it, you don't have it, but I'd appreciate it. It, it, it sounds like a great, a great project.
I can assure you they have it because we had some concerns about what the front facade was ultimately gonna look like. So we can certainly provide that for you.
All right. Thanks, brother.
Thank you.
Anything else for Roger on this project? Before we get into his more complex project?
No, I'm all set. If you, if you can just send some, send some of that information, maybe send it in one location. We send it as a package from the meeting to everyone. So that they have it, you know, it'd be, it'd be good just for, um, just for their, for their information and mine also.
I will include that in the, the rendering, which we definitely do have, so.
Roger, did you folks have a conversation with Aqua about that project?
I have not. I, I can't speak for Glenn. He is in town tomorrow and Friday, so I can certainly get you an update on that if you like.
We should, we should probably get it to them before it ends up in front of the council, just so that there's no concerns about, you know, you not having, you know, spoken with the neighborhood people about it.
Smart business. Yep, we'll do.
And the last item in the, the TIF section of the meeting here is Roger's project on Maple Street. This has been a very complex project. The city actually owned two of those row houses, the, the ones that are to the right that are boarded. Put them out to bid several times with no bidders. Roger ended up purchasing them. And then I think one of the most important things that happened was assembling the rest of the, he went and purchased the other four units privately. And now has full site control of the six row houses. Obviously, unique architecture, important to the historic preservation community in Springfield. And so we've been working on trying to figure out this project through H-DIP. And I know Roger's been assembling several funding sources for this, for this project as well. It's coupled with a building across the street, 169 Maple, which is an 11-unit apartment building. All three-bedroom units, really large-sized three-bedroom units. So they're paired together as part of this project. The overall unit count is 11 three-bedrooms, six two-bedrooms, 12 one-bedroom units. Six and a half million in total development cost. Uh, six and a half million in total development costs, I don't know if that number has risen recently. Um, and you kind of see the, the numbers there, uh, we have had an ongoing discussion, obviously, with the, the current condition of the property, it is, uh, it's in tough shape and really obviously requires a significant overhaul, and so that's been an ongoing discussion with Roger and our code department and, and in our office as well, so. Roger, I don't know if you wanna speak to the kind of, the current status of the overall project for these two?
Absolutely, thanks, Brian, um, you know, to reiterate, uh, one of the more complex projects I've been involved in, um, there's a, a variety of funding sources on this one to get the pencil out. We have state and federal historic approvals for all the proposed renovations on all the structures. We are, uh, we have all the other funding sources in place to be able to move forward, it's a, like you said, it is complex. We're looking to phase this one, but as far as the construction goes, and just so we can kind of enjoy some economics of scale that comes with a systematic approach, uh, starting with one sixty-nine and transition directly into the one seventy-four to one eighty-four block. Uh, the, the project works together as a whole, uh, by being able to leverage the stability of the total unit composition. To Brian's point, there's a nice spread of units here, it's not just one bedrooms or two bedrooms, it's ones, twos and threes. So we'll provide for is a nice little community right there in a corner. It's really a gateway into the downtown, it's one of the major commuter routes, um, it is a high-profile location, uh, it does, uh, is quite the eyesore in its current capacity, uh, hence the large development costs associated with it, it's a full-scale historic restoration. I've been, it's, it's, it's been a long time coming, we've been working on this for, uh, you know, a few years now, and we're, we're very close to right the finish line, it feels like. So happy to answer any questions anybody has about this one.
Well, I, um, I'm very familiar with the location. Is that something that you guys own for a long, long time? How long has it been in your possession? Because it's, it's, it's been run down forever.
Yeah, I think, I think the beginning of the acquisitions was four, three and a half or four years ago, and Brian or Tim, you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, with the city's RFP for the, the three parcels, and then there was putting together the rest of the assemblage after that. So there was, uh, there was a period of time where we had to assemble the remaining parcels.
And what do you, what, so when you guys actually get everything said and done, it's not gonna be the same way it is right now, is it something? I mean, it's like a rat trap right now over there.
Well, this is, this is a full, this is a full historical restoration, so it's gonna be all new windows, uh, all new, all, all new accoutrements everywhere, it's just basic, but it all has to be done to the historical specifications of what is there. So just imagine going back in time one hundred and fifty years, um, and it, they'll look the same as far as the, the composition of the units and the architecture, but everything will be completely refreshed or reinstalled and brand new.
So Roger, can you just come back to the townhouses and explain, you know, that the, the unified ownership took time because there were only certain parcels that the city had control of that it made out. And explain that process?
Yeah, absolutely, so after the city RFP, uh, and we took title to those two on the end there, we had to go and try and acquire the remaining four, now during the storied history of these properties, no one person ever had control of more than two of the units. And these are deeded individually, and so it's six different parcels. The problem is they share several roof lines, another particular, you know, brick devising wall, utilities in certain case. And I think that that disjointed ownership, was that me or someone else?
No.
So, so the disjointed ownership really put an undue burden on the, the management and operation, I think, of any of the one individual units all by itself. So really be able to stabilize this block by combining the ownership was really a cornerstone of this development incentive. So, uh, we, one of them was purchased privately, uh, on an open, you know, just a direct person-to-person. The other one was purchased out of a foreclosure auction, well, it was the foreclosure auction happened, and then we ended up buying it subsequently, uh, directly from the bank on foreclosure. One of the other units was, two of the other units were purchased in conjunction from the same owner, one of them had been rehabilitated to a lesser extent, and the other one was completely in, in a similar state of affairs as one seventy-four, one seventy-six. Just, you know, rundown, uninhabitable, you know, condemned, a condemned building. But, uh, you know, really, you know, in order to, as I said, to stabilize this block and to secure its legacy in Springfield, it made sense to take the time to go after and acquire all of those parcels.
And did you guys have people living in the other, in the properties? Ran?
Two, two of the parcels have occupants, that's correct.
Okay. Um, cuz a lot of times what happens, and, and where are you guys from? Where would the owners actually be?
I'm, I'm born and raised in Springfield, my office is in Springfield currently, I live in Wolverham.
Yeah, cuz a lot of times, we, I know we have a lot of, a lot of issues when it comes to, um, the rats and roaches and stuff, where, where we are. Like, uh, over there, I know that they have a lot of issues over there, cuz I, I, I go around there. And then I, you know, I just, I mean, I'm always for the projects because I know that it'll, it'll make it a better area. I even know the area right across, so I mean, it, it sounds like a great area, I would just make sure that. Are you guys raising the price of the rents and things like that?
Well, there'll be market rate rents on the units.
I mean, the people who live there.
All those, they're actually, those units are gonna be redeveloped, so what they are right now is not what they will be when it's completed, so there's plans to relocate the existing tenants to, you know, for the, for the duration of the construction.
Okay. So I would just, you know, suggest that maybe you still, I would speak to the neighborhood council over there and the counselor over there, just to make sure everything runs smoothly. Because that can sometimes be made an issue where it isn't an issue, I've seen it happen. Just FYI, okay?
Counselor, uh, just to note that there, there is a, uh, a written letter from Maple High Six Corners addressing a a host of issues with these properties. I've reached out to, uh, counselor Edwards and has, I've indicated that uh, we will have responses to the concerns of the neighborhood council prior to this coming, uh, for the council.
Yeah, cuz I, and, and, and thank you, Tim, cuz sometimes it's just, it's good to get ahead of it, you know, so it's not, you know, so everyone knows that you, those are issues that you're looking to address, and it's, I, I just.
I think the, the concern from the neighborhood council is more along the lines that they, they consistently go by the properties and they haven't seen any forward movement on them. And having some understanding of, you know, wh- wh- what, what's currently the situation with the, between the city and the property owner.
That, that's all I have, I mean, I don't, you can continue, I would just add in my input.
So, I mean, I think the, we're, we're kind of working through those issues, uh, but I think this is one that it is, it's, it's been a challenge, but I think it's, it's an important project for the neighborhood to really start to see some progress there, so we're uh, hopeful we can make some progress and take some steps here, um, and get this in front of the full city council again, uh, in the next month or two. Roger, have you, um, have you been in touch with the neighborhood yourself and on this project recently, or is that something that you'd be?
We've had, I had spoken to Melvin and the neighborhood council a couple of years back to get letters of support. And I have not updated them since then, uh, you know, I wanted to wait till we were a little bit closer, I'd be happy to reach out and get in front of that council, uh, address their questions directly, uh, and, and seek their support again before we got to city council, if you think that's beneficial.
Yeah, and I think a lot of times when it comes to the actual, uh, neighborhood councils, e- even if you have like a design, they like to just see some of that stuff, this is what we're putting here. Um, a lot of times when they're driving by, like Tim said, they're looking to see improvement, like, okay, well, what do you, what is everyone doing? So sometimes even just by showing them and keeping them in the loop, you know, it, it, it does help, it helps a lot.
I agree a hundred percent, I have full, again, I have full architectures on this one with elevations and a, a very detailed spec package, all that's a requirement of the national parks submission and the mass, um, state historic as well, so, uh, it's a full spread.
Sounds good, um, any, anything else, anybody?
Counselor Brown, I'll just add that, uh, you know, the redevelopment of this without some type of, um, incentive for any project like this, it's just not economically feasible, so I suppose to expect anything to have been done, it's tough. You know, to, to expect an investment to be made without this investment, just because the sheer cost doesn't make it worth. So it's something I'll add there to, to that point, and, and just lastly, uh, Roger, you did mention there was a couple of tenants, I happen to be familiar with this property. Uh, I'm not sure that these are tenants who would necessarily be, you know, families that were uprooting and moving out. I don't wanna disclose too much about what I know about the tenants, but uh, maybe you could comment on that, uh, Roger, if it's families that were thrown out or not.
Uh, yeah, uh, the really, the tenant placement here was really just to kind of stabilize the building, um, get some eyes and ears on site, so we're, um, this is folks who I may have a relationship with, uh, I had an employee living there for some, some period of time. Just to kind of have an eyes on the building and hands on site, um, in the event of emergencies or responses, um, and just to, you know, like I said, to keep the lights on and keep the building open, they're, they're, you know, at discounted rents right now, because of the condition of the buildings, obviously. Um, and fully anticipating that, um, you know, part of the redevelopment, they'll have to relocate. Uh, you know, one of them is the attorney on the first floor, uh, who's been there since the eighties. Uh, he's a big supporter of the project as well, he's been a, a wonderful ally in this redevelopment too. And, you know, he's, he's planning on retiring, uh, when I, you know, when I start swinging the hammer, I think, so. Uh, there, I don't, I don't foresee any real displacement, and again, we're talking about maybe three tenants in the whole assemblage.
Well, glad Matthew told you to clarify, cuz you made it sound horrible.
The, the council, uh, was once presented with a, uh, a project where there was maybe ninety percent of a, a hundred unit building was occupied. Uh, so certainly that was a big concern, what are we gonna do with all these families? So I understand that that was a huge concern, I don't think in this case, um, it's, it's like that.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for clarifying, thank you.
And thank you, uh, Matthew, as I would fully agree that a project like this is, has little chance without an incentive uh, of moving forward, and even with the incentive, I think Roger could certainly speak to the gaps that exist, uh, so.
Yeah, I mean, this, and, you know, to, to, just echo that point, Brian, I mean, you know, you mentioned the preservation thing, this is really something that is, uh, kind of a pet project. You know, this isn't a, this isn't a huge financial, um, gain project, this is one where I'd be lucky to break even after a, a number of years, but this is a property that has historical significance in Springfield, I consider myself a bit of a preservationist in the local community. Uh, and, you know, it's, the economics are difficult, uh, but that doesn't mean that we should let it go by the wayside and let this property deteriorate any further. Unfortunately, I mean, those units, one seventy-four, one seventy-six have been vacant for, I'm gonna say nigh on twenty years or greater. Uh, you know, they, without, without someone taking up that banner, uh, and, and, and taking, you know, steps forward, I, I fear we lose these row houses, and if you look across the nation, these Gothic-style architecture row houses have been in dwindling supply, they've been deteriorating, they're hard to maintain. And, you know, it's just been, it's just such a storied part of Springfield's history. You know, I would hate to see it go on, so, and so we labor onward, and, and, you know, I do believe, uh, the, like I said, we're at the finish line, it is near. Uh, and, you know, I really wanna, I really wanna take it home and, and, and make this a, the shining star that it once was, uh, you know, like I said, in that gateway to Springfield's downtown.
Great. Well, thank you, Roger, appreciate it, um, we will, uh, plow onward with this one, this is, uh, it's good stuff, so. Um, I think that's all we have on TIF and H dip, I know before we conclude the meeting, uh, we wanted to talk a little bit about small business loans, so I will uh, stop sharing here and Tim, I don't know if you wanna intro Kathy Bonos here as well?
Um, counselor, we just wanted to have a, a discussion with the subcommittee, uh, we're internally, uh, uh, reassessing the small business assistance program. Um, as I'm sure you and every counselor, uh, are, are getting calls from small businesses that have been negatively impacted by COVID. Most of the small businesses that, uh, we have made, uh, these small business assistance loans to have been equally negatively impacted by COVID. And the vast majority of the, the businesses in the portfolio are, uh, women or minority-owned businesses, which obviously have been disproportionately impacted by COVID. And one of the thoughts that we're having as we're assessing the program going forward was looking at the remaining, uh, balances on these loans and ultimately converting them, uh, to a, a grant, um, to the business in terms of stabilizing them and helping them to continue to stay in business as they rebuild, uh, from the impacts of, uh, the pandemic. I think that a, as we look to the future, most programs like this in other municipalities are traditionally done as grant, and there's no expectation from HUD that the, this type of assistance would be repaid back into a, what would be called a revolving loan fund, it basically goes back into program income for CDBG. So, you know, my thought going forward is that we should structure this program, especially for, you know, it, it, the program should be designed for emerging businesses that are, are starting up and providing, you know, that startup seed capital as grant as opposed to a loan. And that, that's, those are the two issues that I wanted to have a bit of a conversation about before, you know, we internally began to make such, uh, uh, adjustments and see if you had any thoughts on either end of that spectrum.
Well, from a lot of the different businesses that I've been working with, um, I find that the information to actually access the funding is the, is the major thing. So even when you go into the Mason Square area, a lot of these, uh, mom and pop shops, they wouldn't even know how to begin to access it. And then there's different businesses as far as, um, dance studios, different, I mean, there's different organizations that do not know how to access it.
Right.
Let alone new ones. I would think the ones who, uh, and then there's some who started, and they don't, they haven't been in for maybe a year. There's been like a certain qualification, you had to be around for a certain amount of time. So yes, that, that would help them, but I can assure you, there's a lot of businesses out there which you still don't know how to access the loan itself.
Yeah, I, I, I would agree with you, I, I think that, you know, the, the marketing of the program certainly needs to be broader than it previously has been. And, and we're, we're clearly looking at that. But from a, 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 a structure standpoint, you know, uh, I, I think it's pretty clear that, you know, obviously, business lending has a role, and loans have a role, uh, in, in growing businesses. But, you know, with the types of businesses that were i- in growing businesses. But, you know, with the types of businesses that we're interacting with and and the program is touching, I I'm just not convinced that those businesses are at a stage that they, they have capacity to take on additional debt and that, you know, there's an appetite in this marketplace, especially during the pandemic, to actually access more debt and take, you know, that on from a business perspective. You know, we we paired up in a program with common capital. And that program has yielded very, very little in terms of of leads and closed loans. Because right now, there's just not an appetite within the marketplace for these emerging businesses to be willing to, and rightfully so in my mind, to take on debt. And I I I really think, you know, providing this, this program more as a grant structure will certainly, you know, bring more businesses into to take a look at it. And I also think that we would like to to pair the grant programming, the the grant component of this up with basically getting training for the small businesses as well. So that, so i- in exchange for getting our grant, you as the business owner have to take small business development training.
Yes, exactly. That, that's, that to me even on the, o- o- on the beginning and would be a requirement. And then also making sure we can, we can a lot of the business owners, like I said, that 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 really can be, it can be impactful for, believe it or not. They're not gonna do the research and they're not gonna get this information. I've had a lot of different things throughout the community and it's, it's hard, even if you're giving away things for free.
A- a- and I, you and I both heard that, uh, in the the meeting with the pastors, uh, you know, the, the business, the minority business community is, i- i- is insular i- in terms of, you know, i- i- it's suspect of debt and it's suspect of government in terms of government providing free money. And then, you know, also is very proprietary in terms of the the information about the business. And, and, you know, those are all issues that, you know, intersect here.
And it's definitely, I think it's something I think it is something that you definitely, we, you know, you definitely, we gotta think about it. Definitely something you gotta think about. Unfortunately, when we, we have great ideas and we want to implement them, and sometimes they just don't work based on I don't, I have no, sometimes, sometimes I don't know why, but I just, I think, uh, that did I admit, um, give me one second.
He's connecting.
But I I I'll keep going. A lot of times what happens is that, uh, I know the city will pull out these different programs. And it's, it's still about, especially when it comes to uh, this, the the coronavirus and how it's impacted everyone. I think a lot of people are still afraid and they're uneducated. I'm uneducated. That's why I always will sit there and I, and I think it takes everyone to kind of like educate everyone on the different things that are out there. Uh, I I think with this small business loan stuff, a lot of people ask me and I'll tell them certain things and I'll direct them to certain people. But, uh, it's, 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 we're, we're, we're not educated as far as what's going on out there. I know that.
Yeah. But thi- this particular program, Brian, how long has the program been in existence?
Oh, so, yeah, so the existing loans that we're talking about, I mean, that program has been in existence for at least fifteen years. So we've got, you know, we've got, they're loans of less than fifteen thousand dollars typically. And so when COVID hit in March of last year, we basically told everybody, we're, we're putting the loans on pause. You don't need to go into repayment at the moment, and we're not gonna penalize you for that. Uh, and so as Tim said, we're trying to figure out, well, you know, what do we do with these folks at this point?
And, and, you know, i- i- you've heard it, I'm sure, about, you know, businesses that, you know, have had serious economic impacts from, from the, uh, from COVID. And, you know, the the mandatory, uh, public safety orders, uh, just, you know, collapsed their business for for months. I mean, a- and the types of loans that we're talking about here, councillor, you know, are, a lot of them are are dealing with barber shops and hairdressing facilities. Those, those businesses weren't allowed to operate for months, uh, because of the public safety orders coming down from the governor. And, you know, I I I think our thought on the remaining balance on these loans is to, you know, look at that and say, okay, you know, this would give them an opportunity to to reinvest in in making their businesses stronger and hopefully help them emerge, uh, more economically sound, uh, as we we progress out of COVID.
Well, and to me, Tim, I I I want to commend you guys for, um, even considering it, consider it. Let's see if we can get it going. I mean, I'm all for it. I mean, I'm I want to thank you guys for even sitting there. Let's, let's go.
Committee of one tonight, but I I I do think I I will have further conversation, uh, with other council members just to make sure.
What are they gonna say? They're gonna say, no, that they don't want to help the struggling people in the community? Let me speak for the rest of the city council and say, we definitely want to help for the other people.
I'm, I'm really glad to hear that. I I I, we've been thinking about this for quite some time and I I'd like to get it actually finalized. And then as we advance with a new program, you know, really be looking at this in in terms of us making an investment in the business. And instead of looking at it structured as a loan, your, your requirement on your end as the business owner is that you have to, you know, you have to get the training and you have to evidence to us that you've actually undertaken the training, uh, for for small businesses. Which I think only strengthens their position in the long term.
Definitely, because I know a lot of the actual hairdressers and barber shops are friends of mine, and they were impacted. And it was, we were thinking of creative ways when it first happened. So it was like, okay, well, how can you, if you really think it's gonna, it's gonna be difficult, is how I I thought. So to hear that, you know, you guys were coming up with a way, you guys are coming up with a way, it sounds like great news to me. Let's figure it out. I'm definitely happy about it.
Thank you. I mean, we'll keep you informed as we, uh, begin to move forward.
Well, if that's, it's, uh, five fifty-one. So I usually, I I hopefully my city council, uh, economic developed me and then it ran over a little bit. They usually only last, uh, five minutes. But I appreciate everyone, um, for coming. And if 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 you guys can, um, send me as much information or other councillors, I definitely appreciate everyone, um, for coming to this meeting. And if there isn't any other questions, I'd like to adjourn. No, you sure?
I think we're good. Thank you, councillor.
We're, we're all good. You're the one that gets to vote to adjourn.
Yeah, well, I guess, I guess I vote to adjourn. You guys have a blessed evening and, uh, grow your families.